Mark the motels. And there is one exit out of Interstate eight. That I went down and looked at when they come out of Interstate eight. Onto, across the highway on the North J. They can actually go straight across.
If we get permission from...
If we give them permission to do that.
Now, do we have to give them, or do we have to get permission from tall town and...
No, actually, they'll be going across the highway on the J Street.
So they're going from...
By the Snatch Shack?
Like for, uh...
Yeah.
Yeah, by Snatch Shack and...
Right. That's if they, you know, they can go up to Clear to Missouri and go clear on out into the mountains.
Yeah, that's just...
By the prison and stuff like that.
Interstate eight is okay with people not staying there, using that as a...
No. That's only for people that stay in there. See, that's why I wouldn't... That's why I didn't really mark it.
Well, I don't know that we can consider that a ninety-degree crossing either. That would be more like a... Well, from their parking lot, it's pretty darn shady out there.
It'd be closed.
Yeah, if you've got out here on this end.
You kinda had a diagonal, but...
Yeah.
No, I think it's...
It's diagonal.
Yeah, a little bit.
A little bit.
Fifteen deep, probably.
Yeah.
But I didn't mark that, you know, I didn't mark it on my map, but the fact is that basically just the people out there that stay in Interstate eight, if anyone's using it.
Yeah.
Otherwise, they've gotta come back out on K Street and come up.
Yeah, they go K to Second and then go out to Reverta or S or out to the Fairgrounds or something.
Either that or go Clear.
Yeah, if I, if I, if I'm lucky to go at the Fairgrounds, I'd better get on Second Street, right?
Yep.
Second or Center.
Go Clear down to...
Right, Second. Second or South Third?
Uh, go down Second.
Yeah, South Third you would do it.
South Third to Reverta.
But you've gotta be a really stupid one to be driving around the school under ATV at certain hours.
I think we're gonna eventually have an issue with kids driving. Once they have their license, they can legally do it. I mean, I, I think there's been a couple of them.
But now, when I was reading the ordinance, they have you to be licensed though. They're gonna be on a, on a city street. They have to have a certain kind of license.
Well, they have to have an Oregon driver's license.
Well, but, but, but the ATV has to have a license.
Uh, just with an OHV sticker. You can get that. That's ten fifty every two years. It's an OHV permit. Off-highway vehicles, what we require at this time. And they have another OHV... That's their own gift.
I would, that makes me nervous. I would want to know if, if I see this guy ripping down E Street.
I almost guarantee he doesn't have one.
Yeah. And I, but not only that, but if he had a regular license of some kind out there.
State won't issue them, and we legally can't.
How come?
Statutorily, well, the, the state required titles for, I don't know, what about a year, Daniel? And then they lifted that, and then just was titled Snowmobil.
The state won't register them because all train vehicles are not intended to be driven on the pavement.
They're, they're not...
They are now.
Well, by our...
They're not designed before.
They're, they're not basically NHTSA-tested, National Highway Safety Tested for crash ratings. Is the biggest concern. That's why you have dirt bikes versus endurals. Endurals have had the testing, dirt bikes have not.
And I see that in here with their...
So Arizona has you register them, license everything.
Yeah.
Cause they're all for it. But they also made both Lakers, Horns.
The Arrow?
Yeah.
And, yes. Horns, turn signals, and...
And the, the, one of the interesting things in there, it says over and over again, they have to obey whatever traffic laws are there. So somebody driving right up the middle of the road faster than any car is...
Correct. Or driving backwards on a one-way, there's still a violation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
There's still one violation.
And that's from my experience with those folks, and the ones that are breaking the, the ordinance and the laws are gonna be breaking it regardless if we have an ordinance or not.
They're generally the same ones that have suspended driver's licenses, no insurance.
And then the same ones that we've pitched before we had these ordinances. So it's just, it's a problem.
And I, and I know that the Sheriff's Department's...
Are we, are we taking them and charging them?
Yes.
We're making contacts.
Um, the Sheriff's Department's been trying to catch the guys on E Street. We've been trying to catch the guys on E Street. The state police has been trying to catch the, the guys on E Street. The problem is it's sporadic, and because they're going the wrong way, it's hard for us to justify going the wrong way. So we try and catch them going down F Street, and then by the time we get, they're going faster and, you know, you know, we, we have to look at public safety.
Do you know who they are?
No.
Don't have a clue.
No. Some of them we've identified.
Some of them we've caught, some of them we've taken, some of them I've got pending trials on.
Uh-huh.
So I mean, we've caught some.
And we've been getting better at catching ones that are affecting.
But even that will help. Once, once we get a few of them into court on it, and they're fined heavily, I hope.
Well, we at the city have confiscated a few. In, in pound is, that's a minimum of four hundred dollars, right? That doesn't include court costs and fees there. That's just hard fees and everything like that.
That should help at least to some degree.
Well, that's education on them. The person that I took to trial, they, they just weren't getting it. And I gave them an ATV permit, and we're gonna try a little bit just to...
And then Susie's yard in the back, back there by the shop. And then three, three-wheelers went by, and a kid on a dirt bike that wasn't legal. And time I got ran out there, they were gone.
That truly is a small population of, of those folks.
And that group there, Ray, we've pretty much identified that group. That's Ori Summers and a couple of his little friends. They're all about fifteen years old. We have given them every warning that they will ever receive. Um, that will be citations, entamments, and everything else.
Why is Ori Summers still alive?
This is Ori Summers' junior.
I, I know which one it is, trust me. I've had him in class several times.
Yeah.
He doesn't stay there very long, but...
He, he's for the family he comes from.
He's actually a, he's actually a pretty good kid.
He is.
And he just, just doesn't know how to behave.
He, he really tap dances that line of good and bad.
Yeah, he does. I agree.
I think he has potential. If he, if we can get him graduated and out of here.
You need to get him away from...
Yeah. So he's sixteen now? Fifteen? I think he's about fifteen.
I, yeah, I was gonna say, I don't, I think he's the youngest law lawyer.
Yeah.
And the other thing that you're supposed to have, is that ATV operator permit?
Yeah.
So if they don't have that on their...
So the problem around the state levels is the youth are not doing the required hands-on training. So that's, that's becoming a problem across the state. Day fee workshop, they're preaching. Maybe cite these kids without the class, cause they don't have that either. So it's not just our issue here. It's that problem.
So do, do we offer it here in town?
We do. We have one for a while. We offer them again this spring. I've got to have one this month, but looking back, we're wanting a classroom. Not wanting to, the cold weather's so cold this spring. I was willing if they were, but...
Well, what we need to figure out here is where we want to designate crossings on this map.
Well, I would say in the north end of town, North Second Streets probably are most visible, safest crossing. Uh, you get down to Center Street, the, the congestion there is really bad. Visibility is poor.
Well, I don't like Center Street at all.
No. Uh, North Fourth isn't a ton better, plus you go...
No, and it doesn't, it doesn't.
Not a ton. It is some.
Yeah, but it doesn't come through. It doesn't come through where they're coming down out of the mountains. That's...
But you've got one that's gonna be in this necessity, and that's, um, North H?
Yes.
And Fourth?
Correct.
That's gonna be the only access from the north in the town.
And Fifth and Sixth on the north, north end, cause you've got the Fremont Inn and Best Western both, right there.
Yeah, and would it be moving, moving up one more intersection, get a one more block away from that sweeping corner on, on the highway?
I, I think Sixth...
Actually, what, I went and talked to Carl Tracy, that alleyway between Swabs and...
Yeah, that's on the F Street. Yeah, yeah.
Okay. You can use that to go up. As long as they don't start misusing it, then Carl will put a gate on it.
And what I'd like to see there, Ray, if we can, is put like a five mile an hour speed limit on that. I think that's more than appropriate for the stretch of road that it is. And, and help curb some of that. I mean, I don't know that we legally can enforce anything that we put there, but I'd like to have it. And, you know, then we can visit with folks that are...
Supposedly you have some...
I'm talking about the intersection on Main Drive, on J Street.
And it gives us a reason to talk.
Instead of right there, Best Western and the coffee shop.
So instead of Fifth and Sixth, I, I think Sixth.
Go to Sixth. Just let's do Sixth Street.
Yeah.
As it crosses three ninety-five?
Correct, yeah. Cause I'm just worried that doesn't give much room there. Come around that corner by the Mexican Street. Yeah, sometimes...
That's, that's a mess anyway. That's a mess anyway.
And that yields...
And if you get all the truck traffic that goes through there, there isn't, there isn't enough room in some of those...
And the visibility there at Sixth is pretty good. There's, especially now that they're cleaning up some properties right around there. It's pretty good visibility. But I, but I agree that, that H and Fourth...
And North Sixth?
North Sixth.
Okay, and then North Second and F?
North Second and F.
Okay, cause those, uh, North Sixth and H there will get you anywhere at the north end of town. Missouri and all those.
So now we have the dilemma of the south part of town. And, well, I think Reverta needs to be another crossing while we're up north.
I was gonna say, you have to go down here.
I think Reverta, I think Reverta is, is a good area. We're not looking for Reverta one forty.
Right.
Cause that allows people to get to the fairgrounds. It allows them to get to the mountains. It allows them to get anywhere that they need to go. And I think it'll take some of the, the traffic off of Missouri, which is a little treacherous on the floor weather because of the amount of log truck traffic in there.
Yeah.
Um...
Yeah.
But then the south end of town, we were discussing this today, really inside the city limits, there's no good crossing to get towards E Street, because you have Fourth that goes across, but then you're in a one-way situation. You have Fifth that doesn't come all the way across.
It's got that alley.
It does, and the alley's not even a direct shot. It's, it's angled as well. Um, Sixth doesn't come through. Seventh doesn't come through.
Ninth is your only, your next one.
Ninth is horrible. We have the exact same problem at Ninth as we do at North Four, North Fifth and the highway with that corner in there. So truly, in my opinion, and we need the county's help with this, is that we make it so ten. I think that's the safe way to do it.
Eleven.
Eleven would be that either.
Down by the gas station?
Yeah, but that's...
Twelve.
I always go even further.
Twelve.
Love is open.
Love is open.
Out of good visibility on both sides.
On, on Eleventh? Eleventh is good, just cause you could come down that E Street.
The little, the little congestion on the east side of the road by Mom's house. Cause Bingham's got big trees, and then there's the fence. I mean, Twelfth really, if, if we could do it, I think is open, because ODOT's got their fences way back. Um, the old folks home on the northeast corner is not, uh, super close to the corner. So there's really good visibility at Twelfth.
A little faster speed limit coming in there.
Little faster, but you've got straight stretches both ways.
Off the gas station too.
You've got straight stretches on both directions where you can see a good, good way.
I don't think twelve will matter.
So you wanna go Twelfth instead of Eleven?
I mean, Eleven isn't bad, but I think, I think visibility is, at Twelfth is really good.
But we have to, we have to talk to the county about that, cause that's their road. Cause at, what? This side of Ninth were county, right?
And the other part of Twelfth is it keeps it out of the residential on the east side of the road. I don't know if we're gonna get people to drag that far south.
Has the county adopted an ATV ordinance? Just the regular one also? Okay.
Seeing a lot of people go down E Street and cross Twelfth to get to the gas station.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's gonna be a heavily used intersection anyway.
Go Twelfth Street?
Twelfth, Twelfth is the county's rule.
Well, Twelfth would be our first choice.
But everything in town, in the center here is open, right? So if they have to cross, well, you have to go, the North Second Street crossing too, so.
Yeah.
So that gives the center of town two crosses, one on one.
And I, I know we're gonna have a lot of traffic on South Third Street. I don't know if crossing there, I don't know if we can stop. I mean, legally, they can cross at any intersection unless we create ordinance that says they can't.
You said Third Street, you think?
South Third.
South Third, yeah.
It's got enough traffic.
Right in front of the school.
And it's a, it's a cutting intersection too.
What?
South Third.
All the way up, very much so.
There's, at certain times, that's one of the high-traffic times.
There's that, that other house that, that's, that just moved out.
Yeah, a big two-story house, too.
I don't see much of it during the school hours as they do here in the summer and weekends.
What's that?
The ATVs out.
Yeah. Yeah, ATVs are mostly a summertime deal.
See, and this'll still put them down when they go down South Ninth and out, stop drive. Go clear out to Ball Court, hang right.
But if, yeah, um, so let's say that I'm the kid who wants to drive this far away to, to school, the middle school or high school, then how does he get through?
From where?
Well, let's say down here on the south end, and maybe one of them.
Well, if he crossed, if he comes in from the south end, he...
Can come right down H?
He can come down H, any of those streets. Yeah. Like, say, say, say my niece lived by Mom's house, six fifteen, south to Leaven Street. She would go down to Twelfth, cross at Twelfth, and then come over probably to G Street and, and travel G Street north from Twelfth.
See, and what...
Now, G Street right here along the highway doesn't exist, though.
No, well, it, uh, G Street is the highway.
Yeah, so he would have to cross over to...
So probably H.
Would have to cross over to H and go H.
H or, uh, I, I, I get in, so it'd be H.
Yeah.
H would be a straight shot.
H, yeah, H is a straight shot. So we've got one, two, three, four, five, six crossings. One west of town. We've got, uh, North Sixth and, and North Fourth and H, North F and Second. Uh, you wanna go South Third and F?
We, we, we don't want to, but...
We don't want to. I just don't know that we're gonna...
Be able to avoid it.
Yeah. I mean, we could do Fourth. Fourth would be a better intersection to cross at. Third is very congested. We get a lot of accidents at Third and F. A lot of accidents.
Third and what?
Third and F, the highway.
If we have to name one, let's...
I would say Fourth.
So that means anybody that's from Third to Fourth Street is gonna have to go...
All the way around.
All, the long way around, cause they can't go back on E Street to Fourth.
Yeah, they, they can take the alley, which, oh, no, we don't wanna promote that. But they either hit Twelfth, or they go at Third and Fourth.
Well, yeah, they can go through the alley. They're between Third and Fourth.
They, they could take the alley from Fourth to Fifth, and then Fifth, they can hit E Street and go down. If we did the crossing at Fourth, they could cross at Fourth, south on the alley. I mean, I don't wanna promote that, but I just don't, there's no other crossings. I mean, Ninth Street sucks. Third Street sucks.
Yeah, I, I don't like, I don't like the crossing on Third, because...
We just have a ton of accidents.
Well, and you, and that's your straight shot from a lot of people coming in from West Side, come right up Third.
Yeah. I would say we have more crashes on Third Street than Third and F, than we do at any other intersection in town.
Or T, or Fourth.
Yeah, or T.
What, Ninth what?
If you count...
North Fourth is a few.
Right there in the corner.
There's a few at the back. Usually they try to slide into Snack Shack.
Like, they do. They went to San Antonio.
And see, the thing is, 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 uh, they could cross anywhere on the state highway, but we would rather they designate, use the...
Well, by ordinance, we can restrict that. I mean, we can say, you can cross only at designated areas. The, the, the statute right now, as of January one, allows for the crossing at any intersection, any highway intersection.
But then we have real control over that pattern.
Yes. And then we get people where we, I, I mean, honestly, we get somewhere around over at South Third and E Street. I mean, that is just a horrible intersection. Visibility's bad there.
Is there high pedestrian in there?
Yeah, for the school.
Is that where most of the kids cross then?
Right at South Third and, and...
And I'd like to petition the state. I was thinking about this actually this morning, of either doing like down by your house where they still have the school crossing there, now the two schools are gone.
They're talking about moving.
I'd like to see them put in like a crosswalk where you push a button, the lights come on, stop traffic, the kids cross.
At Third?
And move this, the schools up, up to the South Third Street.
Well, I talked to Jared at ODOT last week, I think it was, and, and he said, tell us where you wanna move, and we can move it, and that's their deal.
Yeah, cause it doesn't need to be there anymore, but...
And that's still somewhat of a crossing area, but it's not, not like Third Street.
Everybody that lives on this in the town is crossing to get to the schools. Or you've got parents who are driving their kids to school. So no matter what you're doing at certain hours, you know, I mean, that's, that's why we changed the garbage truck.
Yeah.
You know, to pick up, because the garbage truck was fighting with the parents who were driving their kids to school, or the kids who were walking.
I think it needed to be moved in the area of Third Street, Third and Fourth. That's where we're having a majority of crossings.
I like the idea of a push-button crossing. That would be great.
The what?
A push-button crossing where they, you know, they push a button and it flushes it.
I wonder why we don't have four-way stops in yours. I mean, that doesn't even do this, but why, why don't we have a four-way stop in the town?
You only got, you got...
We've got a few.
Four-way?
Yeah, South Seventh Street and H is one.
South Seventh is I live on.
Like I said, North, North.
I live on South Seventh, but I, I don't know that.
How many times have you done that, Jared?
Never. I mean, I have enough coming out of my driveway and not being at thirty-five when I pass that star, so...
Well, you guys wanna add South Fourth then?
I, I think it's the best option we have.
I think, let's try it. If we get a lot of fuss about it, we can always adjust it. But keeping it away from South Third and from Center, I think is, yeah, a really good...
I wish there was a South Fifth push-through that we could do at there.
Yeah.
I mean, it's just not.
South Fifth would be really good, but...
You'd be pretty good.
And that alley's not direct line enough with Fifth Street to call that in. Same thing we have at, at Interstate eight. It's, it's, it's at a diagonal.
But at least, at least if you get to the end of their parking lot, you've, you've got a better shot. Here, you don't have a choice. You're here, you've gotta get.
Yeah.
Can you actually have better, better view there on North Fourth at Interstate eight than you do down here on Fifth, from now that alley?
So I'd rather see Interstate eight go down and hit H Street. I mean, or go down the Second and come out S, I mean, to the Fairgrounds.
Come out S?
S to the Fairgrounds. And I think that S, you can almost go straight across to the Fairgrounds.
It looks like T is a straight across.
Is it T?
Well, I wasn't looking at the map. Look at S.
S comes out right by Jim Creel's shop. Yeah, by Jim Creel's and that East Street.
And drive that other driveway there, yeah.
So you could go in that back side, that back driveway for, for the...
Like where they let out the parking lot for, uh... T Street's definitely your better option.
Here's T, here's S.
T goes straight across, but then you have to cut back.
Yeah.
You have to cut back to the Fairgrounds somewhere.
T Street would take you right down the center of the Fairgrounds. That big main entrance.
That main entrance, yeah.
Take you in the west entrance?
No, the center. The central entrance. Where they put that new brick wall, and they've got the big sign.
T Street's straight across.
T Street's on that.
Okay, T?
Depends on what the county says.
Yeah. Yeah.
So who pays for all these signs?
Actually, you know what?
Oh, there is somebody in that?
We, we, we went to a pack meeting, out there at the prison, and the guy, we talked to him, and that, um, Department of Corrections has a group...
At Snake River, they make signs.
They make signs. Um, I wish I'd brought my book. I have it laid out to bring with me.
Oregon Enterprises.
But, um, like the deal that the commissioners have over there in their room for their meetings, they even do those.
But, um, they do, uh, missing is to buy their street signs from the Snake River, and then they would make them, so...
And we could probably get a little of nothing, because I don't think the county is really making signs anymore.
Didn't, uh, didn't the OHV folks said that they might have some funding for signs and paddle signs?
Um, yeah. Rob, Rob and I were talking about that, and, um, I think...
The guy that was here the last time, I thought he said that they might have some, they could probably help.
Cause we're looking at the ten, I mean, I know what those suckers cost, but...
Three, four, five, seven?
Seven would be...
Well, I, I don't know about you, Ray. I would like to see a big map sign. Like a four-by-eight put on, like this same map here, put up behind the swimming pool with designated zones for the people that are coming from other areas into town, the back way. They can see a big map sign, you know, like, like I said, four-by-eight sign on two four-by-fours that says, hey, this is welcome to Lakeview, welcome to Lakeview, we're an ATV friendly. Please be advised, this is our designated, uh, designated preferred routes. And, uh, you know, just have a big giant sign and maybe have a key up there where they can pull little pocket maps up. Or, you know, maybe a scan, uh, the bar scan code that they can do, and, uh, put it on their phone.
As of April, we might be making enough money to do that. That's a tourist thing.
It is. It is.
Absolutely.
It's like that Motel tax thing.
But I think this map in color on that sign, you know, just like that, so people can see. And they know.
I think that's a really good...
You know, maybe do a couple small ones, um, in there for North Lake of, you know, in, in South Lake of the prohibited roads. And we put on there a big red prohibited on the highway, so people know that they cannot be on the highway.
So did you guys decide on S or T, or what did you think about that?
T, T was the straightest shot into the Fairgrounds, if the county's willing to allow us to do it. Yeah, we'd be one of these bar books.
So if I come down off the, down bold, I'm gonna come out...
Come out on Center Street.
Center Street. And if I've got that sign there that says you can pick up additional maps at the, um, chamber, you could, you could go right over to Second.
Which puts us, puts them where we want them.
Yeah, puts them right there in the town parking lot. So they can pick up whatever maps they want, and that works.
We put a sign up in ATV parking at, in the town parking lot, you know? And that puts people where we want them.
Yeah. And they can stop there. They can eat. They can...
Yeah.
So that, they can, they can park there and walk over safely without any issues.
So can you guys go over the ones that you've selected so far?
Uh, so we'll start from the west side of town, Reverta Avenue. And we're gonna go North T and Fourth. Uh, coming into town, the next one would be North H and Fourth. North Sixth and F.
North Sixth, that's where I was going. F?
G.
Well, three ninety-five.
G, sorry.
Or G, okay, I got that. All right.
Actually, uh, G.
Yes. North Second and G, or F, sorry. North Second and F.
North Second and F.
South Fourth and F.
South Fourth.
South Twelfth and G.
And South what?
Twelve and G.
Now, I've got, um, Fourth and, and H circled. Is that, did you say that and I missed it?
Yes.
Fourth and H?
And then there's also a conversation about the Interstate eight, owing to J Street. But that would be specific to their customer.
That'd be specific to their customers, right?
So I, I don't think that we put that as a designated. Maybe the motel just has something in there that says, we allow people to travel.
From the east entrance.
Well, if, if, if people, if they didn't mind.
Why would they go? Unless they were headed up to, you know, liking...
Well, if they get into those back roads, then they can hit those back roads and be in, uh, out on Thomas Creek Road.
Yeah, Thomas Creek, Happy Camp.
Something better up on the second one, Reverta.
Now, can they go out Thomas Creek and then out Happy Camp that way? Even on the fourth, or fifth?
Uh, they can do it on, they technically want you to go up Fourth Avenue. Kind of do the fourth and fifth, but it's closed, I think.
Which translates to if they get caught, they're...
Mark's retiring. Yeah, we're good to go.
And here's the other thing that's going on.
We've got Reverta and one forty west, and North T also is crossings.
Correct.
So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
I'm missing one.
Yeah.
Which one? I'm missing one. What do you got? Got Roberta.
Got North T.
North T.
Got North H, Fourth.
Yeah.
North Sixth and G.
Yeah.
North Second and F.
Yeah.
South Fourth and F.
Yeah.
South Twelfth and G.
Yeah.
You didn't say, well, you said you weren't gonna post it though, on J and Fourth.
J and Interstate Eight.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be for Interstate customers, don't it?
Yeah. And I think that, like I said, the worst part is gonna be that South Fourth. You know, people that are wanting to go down South Fifth, they're gonna have to go down the alley, which I don't wanna promote, but I don't know what else we can do. To try and push them down to South, to South Twelfth, you're gonna have people that are gonna go the wrong way on, on E. I mean, that's what it's going to do.
Um...
South Ninth is just so bad.
I definitely don't like South Ninth, because I've sat there and then I'm, you know, I'm looking to the left and I'm trying to look to the right, inch out, see around that building, and it's just...
I wish they'd just go to the outside, and they could see around that.
Now, the, I'm kinda showing Sharon, I think you've got my other map, that you have this. It shows the whole motel.
Then I think we'd also like to talk maybe to like Fremont Inn and the Best Western, and have them put signs that on, towards the highway, no ATV exits, you know.
No, what? Say that again.
So we don't have ATVs leaving the Best Western, Fremont Inn onto the highway, see if they're willing to post signs, no ATV exits, you know, and ATVs, you know, pushing them to where we want them to go.
So where would you push them if they were staying at...
To North Sixth.
Right.
Or down, up around Carl Tracy's.
So they could drop the back and go down that way.
See, we could take like this map, make a book of them, each motel have them.
Yeah.
And, or it doesn't nick where they would go to, out of these motels to get certain directions.
Yeah.
But where the old Rimrock is, you can see they've kind of got a little road around it, they've been using that.
Not illegal road.
It's an alley access.
Not, not next to it.
Right.
That's the alley off of East Street.
What that comes up from the highway up there is not an illegal road. And the only thing that you have is when Danny set that whole property up, uh, we, they said, they were gonna close that little short one there, I don't even know who lives there, was it Stillbuck's there in that red house on the corner? Is it Stillbuck's? Well, I know Mr. Filbert lives on this side of the alley. There is no driveway access there, you just go up over the curb if you're coming in that way. But it's really narrow because whoever was in Millinnies or somebody planted a huge big tree that's on the alleyway access. But the, the town maintenance people have to be able to get in and back there, and when they set that, plotted all that thing up, they had, they set up all the way down, and they were gonna close this, and it was like, "Uh, excuse me, that's not gonna work, who's gonna back their trailer from Ninth Street?"
Right.
Behind, you know, us on Seventh.
She came up behind the DMV and we're headed north. You've got access behind one house, and then you've got the next guy built gates across the house.
The thing with Rimrock, it's between Seventh and Eighth, there's no actual crossing.
That's what she's talking about. And you've got sewer of E.
That's what they were using as a source of access, now.
They have, yeah, yeah.
That's the way.
That's a part of, I think that's part of Dan's...
Sure, because you have sewer service from right going to Big Gate.
But I think there's an easy north problem. I think they said there was, I wish, I wish...
Kit problems, obviously, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. But they said there was an easy way out here.
That's like this is an old alley here, an easy way, is it?
Darwin did.
It's just that now, Jeff just said that that's been vacated.
This is where that church is.
That alley's been vacated, yeah. And we have no legal access in there to that manhole that's behind Lars' house, you know. So I mean, everybody's been good enough to keep it open, because I just had this...
Well, you know, I mean, you saw what Hoseck did, I mean, they had a survey, and he moved it out to the very edge of the...
And it's actually not a city sewer, it's a private sewer line that the city maintains, but it actually does not belong to the city because it's not in an alley access.
It belongs to Plato, because he's the one that...
It's no man's land.
Our, our sewer pipes go every which way.
That was sloppy gray.
Yeah, I've told you about it. Well, issue is up near our house, and there's buildings built up to that sewer vein.
Yeah.
I, you know, Rimrock is basically pretty much out unless they figure out some way to...
We had to leave there.
Okay, so this is where you're talking, right next to the box.
Yeah, that's right next to the box, that is.
That's not the only one here. So is that a true...
That belongs to the city.
This one belongs to the city.
So then they're good to come out there, right?
Yeah.
Well, they're good as long as nobody builds a rack in here.
But this is their lot, right?
Whose?
First Rimrock.
I think this one belongs to Rimrock, so they can do it right here, but that's not really... The alley that Danny set up, so this one...
I see this is the funny guy's gate. What's he chasing, Skunk's first supposed to take advantage of?
Might, I don't know, he got done with it, but he said he would...
Oh, cool.
...trade with these people, because he understood that these people would see him, and he was here.
Right.
And, uh, said that they need access behind, and then...
All right, I won't make a joke.
Nice, so we've seen that a lot.
There is a sewer, I mean, that's a, that's a fair lot.
When Darwin gets back, I'll probably find out, he's gone all week. Because he probably goes off for a week.
So this, this stands, right? So this is...
Yeah, it doesn't change.
Is it one of the things they're renumbering?
I don't think that was...
I know that's a huge issue from Fort Monsey, probably, but asking ODOT sign, and then an issue like the speed limit, and I can't tell from your side, it doesn't...
Not very.
It's not stamped with ODOT, so it's not forcible.
Yeah, our, our signs don't have to be stamped, but they're supposed to be reflected.
Something after three would be, you want to wipe it, wipe it down.
No, that number stays. That number's fine, yeah.
The other thing too, when we, when we get this all done, we definitely need to remind people that they need to follow the laws of motorcycles and stuff like that. You gotta put their headlights on and stuff like that.
Do you guys have the ATV brochures, the laws, and all that?
No.
I don't call them, do a box or two or three or ten, shit, to be honest.
I would like to. The other concern I have are the people who are driving their little scooters.
Really?
Are you getting to ya?
Probably not. It's okay.
Well, I wait for them to air it, I'm gonna dig a speedo.
Yeah. They're riding that.
My boy.
But I've seen...
I go back for the street, so they...
And I want some of the guys...
Driving real scooters on the road?
Technically, yes.
No.
Yes.
They, what now?
You, you, tech, he has to, they have to have a driver's license to be on the road, and the legal answer to that is yes.
Yes, it's another ask. Well, I'm not as concerned about that as I am them having to obey traffic laws, because that's what I see in nothing.
Yes.
And I'm thinking, "I'm sorry, you don't automatically have the right of way."
And we have spoken to almost everybody, there's a couple I don't know that we've spoken to, but I know that I personally stopped two, three of them, Argus has stopped two or three of them. Again, they're running...
Does, does the guy who's selling or leasing these, does he give them that information? That's who we need to get information to.
I mean, I'll go talk to him and see.
See if there's, you know, I mean, if nothing else, we put together some kind of...
Well, I just need to, well, I can hand them an Oregon driver's manual, I mean, that's the laws that they're required to follow.
Well, but not only that, whether, they're, they're allowed to be on the sidewalk. They are not necessarily allowed to go up the street where there's traffic, like on Three Ninety-Five.
Well, and we have told all of them, they should not be on Three Ninety-Five. Almost everybody that's riding one of those has suspended driver's license, and that's why they're driving them. We have told them to...
So if we get a suspended driver's license, my first stop is to get myself a old lady scooter.
Pretty much.
A tractor.
And some of it is...
Actually, I want Jassik's big army vehicle.
So the ATVs license that are, that the kids and all of us adults have to take when we're out in the mountains, those are required as well as a driver's license?
Correct.
Just making sure.
On public land.
Yes.
Which are our roads?
And it does...
All your roads are state, city.
I just go, make sure I go.
And we're checking on the scooter, like, you know, to get some type of ordinance for that.
Yeah.
We are looking into that.
And see, the thing about the scooters is, I mean, how do we tell someone that's disabled? Because they have a suspended driver's license, and they can't be free to travel then.
They can be free, they just need to obey the same laws that...
Correct.
Or the laws that apply.
And so that's why we have allowed them at this time to, to travel on, not the highway, get off the highway.
Get off the highway.
And, you know, get on the side streets, if, if available, use sidewalks, and use sidewalks with caution.
Yeah.
And that's the other problem, is you have some of these scooters doing twenty-five miles an hour down sidewalks, and that's gonna get someone hurt.
Yeah, that's gonna get them hurt, you've seen some of our sidewalks?
Exactly. Well, I think they like to jump.
They do go down East Street the wrong way, and is there anything you can do about it?
Yes, we can write them tickets, and we have...
But it keeps them on the highway, too.
Yeah, I don't like straight. Same thing, they can go down H, they can go down F, they can go down...
Kind of what I thought for East Street was the little tire shutters?
See, on East Street, all they have to do is get on the sidewalk.
Yeah, I made that comment to Sheriff Powell, and I don't think he appreciated my comment.
All they have to do is get on the sidewalk, and then they can legally go down East Street the wrong way, you know.
So they can ride down sidewalk the wrong way?
Even if they went through...
There's no direction of a sidewalk.
There is no direction.
Sidewalks don't have direction.
And really, that sidewalk around East Street is not that bad.
No.
It's probably one of the best sidewalks in the neighborhoods in town, to be honest.
Well, and some of the stuff by Old Lynch's House, you know.
Yeah, but if you're on my side...
Yeah, if you're on, if you're on the west side.
If you're on that side, it's not bad at all.
No.
There's little to note, and there is the scooter or the drop-off so that people with wheelchairs can get down. So there is all of that already there, so why not use it? I would rather them be on the sidewalk than trying to fight going down the street, because I have to stop, because they just keep coming at you. So you have to pull off when they're driving down the wrong way.
Okay, well, again, we don't, doesn't need to cross any, that's the only thing right now.
That's what I have, uh, festival trees, so...
I wish we could get this printed in like in a little book.
What's that?
And, like, when they come in and get the ATV.
Brochures?
They could give them one of those, "This is our ordinance, this is what you need to follow."
Yeah, so you take your tobaters and scanners, but hollowings, that, I think we used to do. Yeah, and if you don't find that route to...
See what's there.
I went to that one place down there on South Sixth and Plamath, and I was running for office, and I'll tell you what, they were printed. That's why I didn't go with them.
Yeah, I'm afraid of them, I mean, I've lived out there, but, because you know, we have to be with them, so we're, we're totally all. So that, that's, is that the Blight Building? Where's the Blight Building?
The old part of the fitness one?
Okay, it is that, what I was told last night, anyway. Well, I think I was saying, way, way, way back when there used to be a meat market, running, "I get Gus Blight."
Well, they were calling it the Blight thing, meat.
An old coast-to-coast one.
So that's what I was referring to, because that's all recent, so...
The old coast-to-coast is where, next to the Masonic Lodge.
Yeah.
Exactly.
That's, that's where it is.
That's...
The fitness center, the old...
Coast-to-coast over there?
Yeah.
Used to be, years ago.
And, uh, our true value is changing, it's going to Ace.
Oh, that'd be, that'd be nice.
Hey, Dan has had it, had it, had it up to, and beyond, right?
I tell you, I see better ads through Ace than I ever see through your...
Well, and, and it's gonna be a better fit for you, because if there's anybody that believes in customers...
All from the Valley Road, not Clay Road?
Ace touts up at least on TV.
Region Five? Or District Five?
Yeah. District Five's probably the ODOT district, I guess.
Oh, okay.
Because the, you know, that Highway Thirty-One over Valley Falls maintained that a whole time. But I don't know that for sure. It might be also how the county would name the...
So you're ready for your roasting night, or you're gonna have?
Oh, yeah, I'm on... Yeah, those are all...
They might have St. Chiselong, I say.
Because you're gonna have the next meeting.
What's the next meeting?
Oh, people are gonna complain about their water, color, their water, maybe, I never know.
It's designer.
I'm not seeing the...
Maybe they should replace all the cast iron pipes out of their houses, and they wouldn't harm that.
Um, what do you want, what do you want to have another...
In your grave, in this lifetime, you do...
Can I kind of finalize everything?
No, no, I did not.
Is that a slur on your former education?
Nope, that is an accurate description of, of my former education, and no, I never thought I would be honor roll three times a row. I would have, technically, last term I did not make honor roll because I only have two classes, but still. But you gotta have at least part-time two classes.
I have one on the twenty-fourth, twenty-eighth.
This'll be my last year.
Yeah, twenty-eighth percent.
We'll see the next meeting, but if you hear that...
I'll be finished and...
The next council meeting's gonna be a big one, we've got this stuff to go over, and then whatever's added to it.
Which isn't...
Because we're not gonna be able to have one, we don't have enough forms.
True.
I don't have a lot to do with that, so I paid for everything I could out of my pocket.
We could have another work session.
I didn't do any books or anything.
See, that'll work.
Okay.
Well, we'll hold you guys from getting ready to have another work session, possibly on the twenty-eighth, but we'll have to kind of play it by ear right now.
Or, um...
On the ATV.
On the ATV.
Yeah. We're not going to be able to have a council meeting because of the lack of form.
So can we all go home and beat the crowd out of the water?
So, Dan, can you check with the county, or do we need to...